Sixth. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Sarah Goldman with the California Department of Public Health Genetic Disease Screening Program. Under the provisions of the Administrative Procedure Act, this is a time and place set for the presentation of statements, arguments, and consideration orally and in writing for or against the changes in the Department of Public Health's regulations. Notice of this hearing was published on the Department of Public Health's website, sent by email, and sent by the United States Postal Service to interested groups and individuals. The California Department of Public Health considers these proceedings to be quasi-legislative hearings in which it's carrying out a rulemaking function delegated to it by the legislature. As such, witnesses presenting testimony at this hearing will not be sworn in. We will not engage in cross-examination of witnesses or otherwise debate or discuss the issues which may be presented at today's hearing. We shall take under consideration all written and oral statements, arguments, or contentions submitted or made during this hearing. The entire proceeding will be recorded in Teams, and a telescript will be provided for the rulemaking record. To accurately record this hearing, please remember the following: Wait until addressed by the hearing officer as to your turn and place to speak. Clearly speak and spell your name and any affiliate you wish to be associated with. Keep all answers verbal, using words and not gestures when speaking, and allow each speaker to complete his or her sentence before responding. The transcript and all exhibits and evidence presented during this hearing will be included in the official rulemaking record. Persons wishing to view the official record may contact the department's Office of Regulations. The address and phone number are shown in the notice for the hearing and posted on the department's website. Persons wishing to speak will need to type in the chat box of Teams your name and any affiliate you wish to identify. You will be called upon in the order of which you have submitted your information into the chat box of Teams. With me on the panel is Veronica Rowland, Regulations Coordinator with the Department's Office of Regulations, presenting the department's exhibits.
Thank you, Sarah. Department Exhibit A. Department Exhibit A includes the regulatory proposal to be heard today together with the public notice of the hearing. The proposal was duly noticed prior to today's hearing. Copies of the notice were sent by email and the United States Postal Service to all interested parties who so requested. In addition, the notice, regulation text, initial statement of reasons, and other supporting documents are available on the department's internet website. We will also accept exhibits from the public via electronic submission at regulations@cdph.ca.gov and during the written public comment period. The 45-day written public comment period will be noticed at a later date. Any written comments, studies, or other information submitted for the record by any speaker will be given a public exhibit number at the time the exhibits are received. The public exhibit number will be entered into the record as public exhibit 1, 2, et cetera, along with the name of the person submitting the exhibit. Sarah?
Thank you. In order to provide an equal opportunity for individuals to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes per speaker. We will call time as appropriate. If the hearing time is not enough for everyone who wishes to speak, comments may be submitted in writing as previously instructed. You may submit, and we will accept written materials for the record. All oral testimony will be recorded in a transcript and therefore will be considered along with the written testimony that is received during the public comment period. All comments are considered equally on their merits regardless of how they are submitted. So I am now going to call on the first speaker. And if you are calling on the phone, you will need to unmute with star six. If you're on the computer, you will just need to unmute yourself. So I'm going to call on Agusa Atay. Please unmute yourself.
I see Carolina Reyes before me and Robin Lynchade before me. Do you want to start with me, or I don't want to take up anyone's place in the queue?
You are welcome to submit written comments if you would like to not submit verbal comments at this time.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak. I'm just saying that there are two people.
You are the first in queue.
Okay, there are two people before, okay. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am Dr. Rose Anatai, co-founder and CEO of Billion2One. Billion2One is a licensed and CAP-accredited laboratory located in Menlo Park, California, that has provided Unity Screen to California residents for the past three years. Unity not only provides screening for trisomies and sex chromosome aneuploides, but also provides fetal risk screening for recessive conditions and NIPT for RHD and CAL from a maternal blood draw. Notably, it is the only commercially available NIPT that can assess fetal risk for recessive conditions and fetal antigens for alloimmunized patients. Prenatal testing is our only business. Today, we are seeing significant negative irreparable damage to our business due to the exclusivity requirement of the program implemented through this emergency regulation. If this requirement is not changed, Unity Screen itself may become extinct in this state. Unity is the only commercially available NIPT for several conditions, including hemolytic disease of fetus and newborn, which is even more common than Down Syndrome. Having been forced to stop offering Unity in California, California patients and providers will be the only patients and providers who won't have access to this important fetal antigen NIPT. We applaud the CDPH for moving to cell-free DNA screening for trisomies, something that has been available from private companies and covered by insurance for years. But the way that it is implemented strips laboratories such as Billion2One of the right to offer this testing to Californians. We believe the behavior by the CDPH is unprecedented. CDPH is punishing companies that have invested in providing a valuable service to California patients by attempting to divest them of their business. By effectively imposing price controls on this important technology, the state will disincentivize private companies from investing in RND in the future.
Hey, do you want me to call on people for you?
That is not to mention the serious privacy concerns raised by the requirement to participate.
Want me to call on the people for you? Because I can see who's in order, what.
Can I?
Go ahead.
This is not to mention the serious privacy concerns raised by the requirement to participate in the state testing program, including reporting sensitive genetic health information to the state or forego basic healthcare. What if a program like this is implemented in a state where termination of pregnancy is outlawed? We believe this is an outrageous overreach of CDPH.
Okay, that, um, I'm sorry, that is three minutes' time. We need to move on to the next speaker.
Okay, I want to just end with, please stop this tragic path. We implore CDPH to remove the exclusivity requirements of the program to protect California patients and providers from further harm.
Carolina Reyes, would you please unmute?
My name is Carolyn Reyes, C-A-R-O-L-Y-N, OBGYN. Thanks for the opportunity. The state are concerned about the proposed changes to the California prenatal program that just rolled out September under an emergency. I'm a practicing maternal fetal medicine specialist at the University of California, D.C. I was raised in the San Juanquin Valley with parents farm workers. I chose to be a physician because I wanted more transparency. The California prenatal program was due for a rebound. You know that to meet the national standards of care for an infant. The goal of the program was to redesign and make available a higher level of technology for the entire population of pregnant individuals in California. I feel that this revised program falls short of its goal. It's a step backwards.
Dr. Reyes, can I interrupt you for a minute? Can you get a little closer to your mic? We have people saying they can't hear you very well.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Better. Awesome. Thank you.
I'm sure my volume is up as high as it's ever been. Pretty high. Okay. When I feel that the revised program falls short of its goal, it's a step backwards for all pregnant women in California. It attempts to improve access, but not equal access. It's no longer transparent in the lab results. Sex aneuploidy is hidden and not provided to providers or patients unless the patient opts to include it. And it threatens providers by jeopardizing their license in order to have providers comply. This is just not consistent with the California I know. NIPT includes sex aneuploidy, has been offered for patients since 2012. It's what providers in this country know as cell-free DNA or NIPT. And we're concerned that the revised program will not be fully accessible to all pregnant women since this sex aneuploidy is run by the lab. Results are there, but they are not provided to patients or providers unless the patient pays. ACOG is used as a reference for the revised program, and ACOG does recommend NIPT, and it does not exclude sex aneuploidy screening. And so this revised program is really trying to, although it's trying to optimize equitable health, it really is not achieving its goal. I know one of the arguments is that cell-free DNA is, we know it's sensitive and specific, and that maybe the sex aneuploidy doesn't have the positive predictive value of the trisomy 18 or 13 or Down Syndrome. But in your own portal, the California Portal System through perinatalquality.org provides the positive predictive values for the aneuploides, including sex aneuploidy. And it demonstrates that sex aneuploidy, Turner syndrome specifically, has a higher predictive value than trisomy 13.
Okay, that is three minutes.
Right. I just basically just want to say that I want California to continue to be a leader in not only providing quality of care, reducing disparities. And I ask that this be a revision to include sex aneuploidy and to not threaten physicians' license in order to participate.
Next, we'll hear from Robin Lynchade Jansen. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Dr. Robin Lynchade Jansen. I am a family physician and fellow of the American Academy of Family Physicians and provide full-spectrum care in Fresno and Clovis, including prenatal and labor and delivery care. On behalf of the California Academy of Family Physicians, representing more than 10,000 family physicians and medical students in California, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns with the proposed changes to the California prenatal screening program. First, the reason family physicians are concerned with the new policy is that family physicians provide primary preventative, continuous, and comprehensive care, including prenatal care. As providers of prenatal care, family physicians want to ensure that screening for sex aneuploides, in addition to trisomies, are covered under the program as they are both common chromosomal abnormalities. One of the most common chromosomal abnormalities is detectable only through sex chromosome testing. Kleinfelter syndrome has a prevalence of 1 in 500 males. In comparison, Down syndrome, the most common autosomal chromosomal aneuploidy in live-born infants, has a prevalence of 1 in 700 live births. Edwards syndrome occurs 1 in 3,000 live births, which is trisomy 18, and trisomy 13 is 1 in 6,000 births. The NIPT or cell-free DNA testing, like Dr. Reyes pointed out, has a positive predictive value for Kleinfelter's that is actually better than trisomy 13 and allows us to use the NIPT test as a useful way for testing for sex aneuploides, especially those that are very prevalent, like Kleinfelter syndrome. Patients should not be billed for the sex aneuploidy screening or have to pay out of pocket at the time of the lab visit in order to receive the services, as doing so would limit access and result in disparities in care. In our area, this additional test could cost patients up to $249. There are sliding scale discounts, but my patient population, if there's any risk of being charged more, oftentimes decline the test because they're afraid they won't be able to pay for it. Pregnancy can be a costly time for medical expenses, and this would contribute to health disparities for those who are at a lower socioeconomic status. California has been and can continue to be a leader in combating racial disparities and inequities in obstetric healthcare by ensuring that access to recommended perinatal services is available to all patients. We urge the department to revisit the policy change to ensure that it will not inadvertently widen disparity and inequity gaps.
Okay, that is three minutes.
Okay, and that there's equal access to all patients. Thank you.
Larry Platt, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. I am OB-GYN, maternal fetal medicine, practicing primarily prenatal diagnosis. There is growing concern and anger at the rollout program that was not fully thought through. The CDPH utilized an emergency regulation to roll out this revised program without a clear justification for its use in an emergency regulation. NIPT was introduced into clinical practice over a decade ago, and many have asked the CDPH to make a change years ago. This should hardly qualify as an emergency act without a public hearing before introduction. The use of an emergency regulation allowed the state to begin a revised program without key stakeholders' input. To our knowledge, no professional society was officially asked for their input. We are aware that CDPH has now received letters of concern from many of them, including Society of Maternal Fetal Medicine, which the president, Dr. Joanne Stone, is on this call, ACOG, Pacific Coast OB-GYN Society, and I believe California Medical Association as a result of concern by groups of clinicians. Solution would be to suspend until adequate input for this program from concerned individuals and professional societies. The program is introduced, provides a lower standard of care than the current standard where, when ordering NIPT, clinicians expect sex chromosome aneuploidy information to be included. As I am sure others will also point out, SEAs are more common than some of the other aneuploids being evaluated. Further, it is well known that the identification of monosomia X can provide helpful and even life-saving information to the mother and fetus. Also, early intervention in XXY and XPYY has been shown to improve long-term outcomes. This information is now being withheld without further payment, which leads to the next issue, inequity. The program as introduced creates inequity for those that can least afford the extra charge to obtain clinical information that has already been available. It is astounding to think that in 2022, the state of California has mandated an inequitable program without the ability to opt out and obtain testing outside the program. This is unacceptable. The CDPH has embarrassed the state of California. Solution for that is remove the need to pay extra for information of sex chromosome abnormalities, set the appropriate fees, and make all participants equal, and return the program to what is now the standard of care. The forceful threat to use failure to comply with these guidelines as a means to report physicians to medical board is beyond insulting. The participation is no longer voluntary. If we do not use this program, our license could be in jeopardy. The document DPH 21-008E, Revised Text on Page 16, states, "Willful or repeated failure to comply with these regulations shall be referred by any person having knowledge of noncompliance to the appropriate licensing authority." We know of no other medical specialty where a state public program restricts how a physician practices and is not consistent with our standard of practice. I suggest removing that clause. The program also restricts ordering cell-free DNA screening to selected number of genetic laboratories. This applies to patients whether they choose to participate in this program or not. We all agree the decision to order cell-free DNA.
That's three minutes.
And the lab company should be between patient and their provider in alignment. The industry, the inability to opt out of any is unprecedented and certainly has no place, I believe, in what should be a volunteer program. I believe we should allow choice. I would say that the letter that came out from the department this week showing how difficult it has been for people to contact the state to get back to them.
I'm sorry, but it's, you're over time.
All right, our next speaker, Kelly McHugh. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you for the opportunity to express ACOG's concerns with the updates to the prenatal screening program. I'm Dr. Kelly McHugh, a California OB-GYN and the chair of the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists for District 9. First and foremost, ACOG believes there has been an error in the interpretation of our 2020 guidance for screening for fetal chromosomal anomalies. ACOG's recommendation is that screening and diagnostic testing for chromosomal abnormalities should be discussed and offered to all patients early in pregnancy, regardless of maternal age or baseline risk. These recommendations are inclusive of trisomies and sex aneuploides as they are both common chromosomal abnormalities. Chromosomal abnormalities occur in about 1 in 150 live births, and they may affect patients at any age, and they are not related to race or ethnicity. One of the most common chromosomal abnormalities, as we've heard today in testimony, is detectable only through sex chromosome testing. Sex chromosomal aneuploides are part of the common aneuploids and should be offered to all patients. While we appreciate that the prenatal screening program has allowed for sex chromosomal screening through a checkbox option, the reality is that in the implementation, patients are being billed for those services. Patients are having to pay out of pocket at the time of blood being drawn by state-contracted labs on the order of several hundred dollars in order to receive the services. This is further limiting access to prenatal screening and promoting disparities in care. In addition, ACOG has concerns that the low number of laboratory participants could further cause access to care issues and delay results for the screening. Even if more labs are allowed to participate in prenatal screening, we are worried the limitations placed on the sex aneuploides testing will discourage labs from participating due to denials and payment from private insurance or patient complaints for having to pay for the testing. Finally, the online Cal Genetics Portal includes several features to assist physicians. One feature that is helpful but simultaneously causing undue administrative burden is the requirement to renew delegates every 90 days. If there's a way to simplify the delegate renewal or extend the number of days for renewal, it would ease the burden on California physicians. California is a leader in prenatal screening and other key public health programs. ACOG truly appreciates the discussions with the department and again, requests that sex aneuploides are included in the program right alongside with the trisomy screening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanya Espirtos, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the California Medical Association, I am Dr. Tanya Espirtos, an obstetrician-gynecologist in California and president-elect of the California Medical Association. The CMA believes that the regulatory changes made to the prenatal screening program under these emergency regulations, which limit the screening program to trisomies, do not meet the requirements of the authorizing statute to, quote, "meet or exceed the current standard of care as recommended by nationally recognized medical or genetic organizations." Unfortunately, we believe that the changes made to the program were done based upon an erroneous but well-intentioned interpretation of the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists 2020 Guidance for Screening for Fetal Chromosomal Anomalies. The screening guidelines are, in fact, inclusive of both trisomies and sex chromosomal aneuploides, as confirmed by ACOG. This misalignment between the statutory authority and the program implementation is likely to exacerbate lack of access and inequities and administrative burden. CDPH's guidance on getting sex aneuploidy screening requires a separate order and billing process. However, we are concerned that the reality of implementation will not meet the theoretically possible. Additional orders and separate billing will be difficult to implement and will result in real disparities in access to care. This could occur by virtue of nonparticipation by labs or confusion upon billing that would require patients to pay out of pocket for the tests at the time of the blood draw. Ultimately, this would mean screening for sex aneuploides would be limited to people who have the resources and the know-how to navigate the system. Sex chromosomal aneuploides that are now excluded are not uncommon. We should not be erecting barriers to patient access to the screening. CMA asks that CDPH urgently work with stakeholders to revise the regulations to reinstate the inclusion of sex aneuploides. Additionally, we encourage CDPH to work closely with physicians and other providers to reduce administrative burdens in the program's implementation like the parameters of the Cal Genetics Portal to make it easier for clinicians to use the program and integrate into our workflows. CMA has seen time and again that the details like database design, access, and integration with health information systems can be determinative in whether program functions as intended. Ease of use and integration workflows need to be a paramount consideration in database design. Physicians stand ready to help navigate these important variables. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the California Medical Association.
Thank you. Sam Marsden, please unmute.
Yes, I'm here, sorry. My name is Sam Marsden from AREEP Laboratories. I thank you for the opportunity to speak at this hearing. So our major concerns are about patient choice and the last, and the lack of process/authority that the department has taken. AREEP is a national reference laboratory, academic-based, nonprofit organization of the University of Utah. We have a large footprint in California. We serve many California patients every year. We're both CAP and ISO 15189 accredited, and we've been in existence for, since 1984. Again, our major concerns about these changes, which were implemented by the California Department of Health without notice or an opportunity for industry comment. While we're licensed in California, we're unaware of any request for proposal or information process occurring prior to the effective date that could have resulted in our becoming a contracted lab. We're unaware of any publicly available application process that provides a path to becoming a contracted lab. Finally, we have not located any publicly available information that describes what the requirements are for becoming a contracted lab. We're unaware of any legitimate reason to terminate trisomy testing by laboratories that have not contracted with the program. We are unaware of any quality data that would justify shutting down all trisomy testing outside of contracted labs. Further, it's furthermore, it's our understanding that approximately 75% of individuals who qualify for the program choose to participate, which in our view makes exclusivity for contracted labs an unnecessary incentive for ensuring laboratory participation in the program. Individuals should be free to use a laboratory that is not contracted with the state if it gives them peace of mind or to choose to have a specialty panel run by a particular laboratory as recommended by their healthcare practitioner. We see no reason for adding unnecessary stress to a pregnancy by limiting patient and healthcare provider choices and access to specialty panels. The department's actions have eliminated fair competition for inter- fair competition, free enterprise, irreparably harming our business without notice justification or authority. By only contracting with a few selected laboratories in a seemingly closed process and barring all other qualified laboratories from providing any trisomy testing, we believe that the department has acted in arbitrary and capricious manner and appears to have eliminated choices that should be made by Californians and by their healthcare providers, not by the state. Thank you.
Mara Hernandez, please unmute yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Mara Hernandez, M-A-R-A-H-E-R-N-A-N-D-E-Z. I am speaking today as both a genetic counselor working at a busy MFM practice with a team of eight genetic counselors total, as well as a member of the public, a Californian with a uterus. I am very concerned from both perspectives about the emergency regulations. Many of the speakers this morning have already addressed the absence of sex chromosome aneuploidy screening, and that is a concern I share deeply. Working in clinic, I have already seen the harmful outcome of the rollout as it is so far. Patients are not being offered sex chromosome aneuploidy screening by the same providers who did offer this to all of their patients prior to the September rollout. It is too burdensome for providers in busy clinics, especially providers serving a low-income, under-resourced population. They are simply unable to offer the screening with the complicated logistics and discussion of paying out of pocket. $99 is what it is currently being billed for sex chromosome screening by Natera and Quest, the two contracted labs. While that may not seem like very much money to many of us on this call, for many, many patients in California who are pregnant, that is an insurmountable amount to pay for screening for conditions that most of them have never heard about before. So, that population is losing access to sex chromosome analysis screening. This is therefore increasing health disparities in California, which I know is the opposite of the intention and mission of the California Department of Public Health. My other concern is regarding the exclusivity provision of these regulations. There are many reasons why a provider and patient might decide together that going through a different lab is the right decision. Many pregnancies are not textbook. There are patients who are obese, who are overweight, who are unable to get a result with these labs and need to use a different lab such as Myriad with a technology that allows for the amplification of fetal fraction in order to receive a result. I have other patients where the mother or father of the pregnancy is a balanced translocation carrier, and their embryos, fetuses are at increased risk for a chromosome abnormality involving a chromosome other than XY 21, 18, or 13. There are labs in California that are offering excellent screening for these other more rare chromosome disorders, and providers in California are no longer allowed to order this screening. So, it is reducing reproductive healthcare access to all Californians. Thank you.
Ashley Weinberg, please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Ashley Weinberg. I am a parent advocate. My son has Angelman Syndrome. Pregnancy is hard enough, and prospective parents deserve to know what to expect when they are planning their pregnancy and birth. The way the program is structured reduces access to comprehensive NIPS information by not including screening for sex chromosome aneuploides and micro deletions. For children like my son, developmental delays and seizures connected to these diagnoses do not appear for several years. The program contributes to long delays in finding a diagnosis for children like my son born with a condition resulting with a micro deletion, which is not part of the prenatal screening program. Timely screening and earlier diagnosis can lead to earlier treatment, earlier therapies, and preserving mobility and livelihood, as well as creating better health and life outcomes for people like my son and families all over California. Sorry, I get very emotional in five years because Angelman Syndrome is not included in some of the prenatal screening programs. We had to go through three different genetic tests to get my son's diagnosis. So, I speak on behalf of females everywhere that deserve to know if they aren't getting into a life of rare diseases or any disabilities that is going to affect their child long-term, even short-term. So, please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Lila Re, please unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I am a genetic counselor in Sacramento with over 30 years' experience in counseling women and families with high-risk pregnancies. I object to the changes to the California prenatal screening program that were implemented as emergency orders without public consultation, comment, stakeholders meetings, or expert medical providers input. First of all, there is no public health emergency. This test, as Dr. Platt said, has been available for at least nine years throughout California and the developed world. As stated by others, this program in only screening for three fetal conditions, trisomy 21, 13, and 18, with no risk assessment for sex chromosome abnormalities or other chromosome deletions, is not the community-wide nor the ACOG-recommended standard of care. Fetal sex chromosome abnormalities all totaled together are 10 times more common than trisomy 13, which is screened for, and velo-cardio-facial syndrome is at least two times more common than trisomy 13. California women are not allowed by state statutes and regulations to opt out of this program, which is unacceptable. It subjects California women to the lowest standard of care of any state in the nation and the rest of the developed world. The committee should strike down this regulation and allow women and their healthcare providers to decide which test is appropriate for them. Otherwise, this program as stands creates major healthcare disparity and inequity. The inferior cell-free DNA test will lead to legal liability for healthcare providers, missed diagnoses, dangerous missed treatment opportunities, and/or wrongful life malpractice lawsuits for the OB provider. When a patient has a second cell-free fetal DNA test to assess the risk for sex chromosome abnormalities, this doubles the cost to the patient or her insurance, doubles the OB provider's workload, and then doubles the chance for errors, conflicting results, incorrect information going back to the patient. The test as it stands is unacceptable and inadequate. It's extremely limited. It would lead to doubled cost, dangerous medical errors, missed diagnoses, loss of revenue, restriction of trade to California laboratories or outside California laboratories who chose not to participate in the bidding process. I urge the Regulations Committee to allow and opt out for California women for the cell-free fetal DNA and to stop threatening my medical license.
That is three minutes?
Stop threatening my medical license if I decide with the patient what is in her best interest. Thank you.
Kristy Foy, please unmute yourself.
Good morning. My name is Kristy Foy, and I'm speaking on behalf of the California Clinical Laboratory Association. We have serious concerns with the department's recent changes to this program. These changes will negatively impact access to testing for pregnant women in California. The department states that participation in the screening program is voluntary. However, pregnant women in California no longer have access to this testing outside of the program. The department has declared it illegal. A woman would have to drive to a different state to have this testing done. If a woman in California cannot find out about this important information on the health of her pregnancy, that does not make it a voluntary program. This is obviously a huge problem. A pregnant woman should have the right to choose to have the test done within a state program or outside of the program. She may have many private or personal reasons for this choice. Access to non-invasive prenatal testing should be available to women in California. It is concerning that the department is prohibiting laboratories from providing testing to patients. California laboratories have been providing the cell-free DNA testing in California for many years and have performed millions of these tests. These laboratories hold valid licenses issued by the Department of Public Health, accreditation by the U.S. government under CLIA, accreditation by the College of American Pathologists to perform this cell-free DNA testing. The laboratories have already been operating under these [inaudible] to perform this testing as follow-up tests in the department's [inaudible] program and to other patients for years. This new prohibition will restrict these same laboratories from providing access to pregnant women who wish to have this important testing. Another concern with transition in this is that laboratories have been told that even if they do want to participate in the program, they have to guarantee that all of the testing will be done only at one of their laboratories physically located in the state. This is a concern because California laboratories have specialty locations throughout the U.S. with specific training and personnel for different types of tests. By consolidating specialty testing at key locations, patients get the best-in-class service at that location. There is no benefit to the patient for the department to restrict where the test is physically processed. The state needs to reconsider the limitations on laboratories that are not in the best interest of the public. We urge the department to carefully review the proposal and make changes to protect patient access. The California Clinical Laboratory Association is asking that women be allowed to choose access to this testing within the program or at laboratories outside of the state-run program. Thank you.
Janet Hornstein, please unmute yourself.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a maternal field medicine physician, and I practice of various demographic groups. And I certainly agree with what's been said previously regarding the sex aneuploidy screening, the laboratory contracting, deletion screening. Obviously, what currently is available is substandard care for our patients. What I'd like to address is the fact that patients I see with lower economic levels and lower levels of education do not have the ability to understand what is being offered to them now. Previously, a booklet was given to patients and explanation of what the screening process was, and they had the opportunity to opt in or opt out as required by the state of California for us to offer them. Currently, there is no information given to the patient other than being told to go on the website. Most of the patients, a lot of them that I see, don't have this capability. Therefore, that falls on the provider ability to provide this, and they do not have the staffing to provide this information for patients. I think it's very important that the California Department of Public Health look at the numbers that they've received samples from and where they're coming from and see where they're not being coming from as compared to previously. I think in 1986, when the program started, it was very progressive. I find it very interesting that no other state has wanted to have a program similar to this. I think they're seeing what California has done to their patient and patient care. I think that's something to consider very strongly, what's happening in our state currently. Thank you for this opportunity.
Athrin Rice, please unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Catherine Rice. I am a genetic counselor here at UC Davis Health. I have the unique perspective of having been very recently a coordinator with the prenatal screening program. I can tell you from my own personal opinion that, I shouldn't say from my own personal opinion, but that the GDSP prenatal screening program was designed to create health equity so that a person's socioeconomic status would not be a component affecting their access to, at a minimum, the standard of care. What I can tell you from my personal opinion is that this program change was poorly conceived, haphazardly designed, and the rollout was a complete failure and continues to fall well below acceptable levels of success. Myself and my fellow coordinators constantly were requesting to be informed of program changes in order to prepare our providers and ensure a smooth transition. We were repeatedly denied that education and materials. I took it upon myself to craft emails and add attachments with pertinent CDPH documents, which many of my providers were unable to find on the very confusing CDHP website. Also, CDHP put out several webinars, which ended up being extremely vague and confusing, adding to the difficulty that providers face. I will also say that I worked with many, many providers from the very north parts of California all the way down to San Luis Obispo into Fresno and Modesto, and then further up through the state there. Providers and their medical staff expressed to me how difficult the change was going to be, the problems that would arise, the lack of their ability to meet the needs in order to fulfill the program, in order to ensure that their patients would receive accurate information and accurate care. I would also like to add that this, again, is creating health inequity where those with wealth can afford the standard of care, and those of lower socioeconomic status will continue to receive substandard care, which is not acceptable in the state of California. The CDPH just recently sent out a newsletter on Tuesday. Quote from that newsletter, "Notably, there has been a significantly lower screen positive rate for chromosome abnormalities compared to previous biochemical program. I request that the CDHP share immediately"
That's three minutes.
"share immediately the number of tests that were done prior to the launch and the tests that have done now, and I believe that we will see a significant decrease in those that have been able to access the program and its value." Thank you very much.
Joanne Stone, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm Joanne Stone and the President of the Society for Maternal Field Medicine, which takes care of high-risk pregnancies. When I learned about this decision, to be honest, I was quite astounded that a public program can restrict the ordering of cell-free DNA to autosomal trisomies unless a patient selects to pay the lab for additional information regarding sex aneuploides. This is completely inconsistent with the current standard of care. This program also restricts ordering cell-free DNA to select number of genetic laboratories. This applies to patients whether they choose to participate in the California prenatal screening program or not. And I think, as mentioned previously, that we all can agree that the decision to order self-free DNA screening and the lab company selected should be decision-made between the patient's provider and the patient in alignment with standard of care and with the current condition. I also want to state that I think that the fact that the participation is not voluntary and could affect the license of physicians is really incredibly problematic. And the fact that there's a failure to comply can be associated with a problem with the inappropriate licensing is hugely problematic. But I want to also say very passionately that this, more than anything, affects our patients and our patient care. It will not allow for the detection of certain chromosomal abnormalities, the sex chromosome aneuploides that are really not uncommon. And as mentioned by Dr. Platt earlier, the detection of these anomalies can help with early intervention, improve outcomes. Finally, this will also affect the inability to diagnose certain conditions. When we get cell-free DNA with the sex reported and the fetal ultrasound shows that there's discordantcy between what the test result is and what's seen on the ultrasound can reveal certain conditions. can reveal certain conditions that would not otherwise be detected. So this is affecting our patient care. And finally, as mentioned, the disparities in terms of only being being able to get this information provided by paying for it just highlights all the inequities and disparities that we, as a country, have been so focused on working to avoid. So I really hope that this legislation will be changed. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
John Valencia, please unmute yourself.
I'm cutting Illumina. Illumina is a global leader in genomic sequencing headquartered in San Diego, California, where over 3,000 of our global workforce of over 7,000 work every day to advance the power of the genome. Just wanted to state for the record that we'll be submitting written comments following today's presentation. Those comments will be in furtherance of our advocacy during the 2021 budget cycle and the 2022 budget cycle, commenting on the broadest available use of self-free DNA, non-invasive pregnancy testing, provided by the broadest array of providers at adequate compensation. Thank you.
Deb Lundgren Walls, are you still on? I know you had to go to a birth, but checking to see if you're still there. Nope. Chanelle Schening, can you please unmute yourself?
Vitek, I just want to reiterate that we support all testimonies that have been shared today and we urge that CDPH halt the program until these concerns are resolved to prevent patient harm. Thank you so much and we will be submitting written testimony. Thank you.
Christina Hahn, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all the speakers who have come before me today. I agree with everything that everyone has said. My name is Christina Hahn and I am a clinically active maternal fetal medicine physician, division director of maternal fetal medicine at UCLA and a mother who has utilized the California prenatal screening program. My opinions today are my own and do not represent those of my institution. I want to start first by recognizing the attempt of the California prenatal system screening program to modernize this program, which, as mentioned by many of the previous speakers, has been long overdue. However, this rollout was very narrow-sighted, did not solicit the input of clinicians actively involved in prenatal diagnosis, and completely missed the mark. Focusing on just trisomy 21, 18, and 13 was the original intent of this groundbreaking California prenatal screening program. And this has now been used as a justification for excluding sex chromosomal aneuploidy. However, this is an antiquated thought process. Much like everything else in medicine, our understanding evolves over time and prenatal screening is continuing to move beyond the common autosomal trisomies as the primary goal of prenatal diagnosis. As previous speakers have mentioned, sex chromosomal aneuploidy have a higher incidence than trisomy 21. And screening for sex chromosomal aneuploidy should be available without extra charge to families, regardless of their ability to pay for the extra service. This two-tiered system will only further worsen the social determinants that affect the care of our marginalized communities. I want to take a moment to remind the Department of Public Health that equality and equity are different. Equality is the provision of the same resources or opportunities to each individual. That's what this revised program is attempting to do. Equity, however, recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the same exact resources and opportunities to allow everyone to reach an equal outcome. The outcomes as they are now in the current iteration are not equal. California is one of the states leading the nation in our legislative efforts to protect the right of the pregnant persons to make decisions in the exam room with their physicians and clinicians without the interference of the government. And I implore the state to apply this philosophy across the board to ensure that we continue to lead the way. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and yield back my time.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who's joined via computer and would like to speak, please put your name in the chat. And if that's the case, Michael, do you want to manage the people on the phone? Michael, you're unmuted. Do you want to manage the people who are on the phone?
Yes, I'll manage them. You can hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay. So I'm going to kind of go down the list of phone numbers. And if you would like to speak, I'll unmute you or you can unmute yourself with pressing star six on the keypad. So I'm going to read off the first number. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself at that point. And then if not, I'll just go down the list of the next phone numbers. Okay, so for the first phone number is a 206-550-9878. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself by pressing star six. Okay, I'm going to go down to the next number. The next number is 310-570-8811. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself. Okay, next number, 209-314-9187. Please unmute yourself if you would like to speak, pressing star six. I'll go to the next number, 310-709-1250. Please press star six if you would like to speak to unmute yourself. Okay, next number, 415-238-1119. Please press star six to unmute yourself if you would like to speak. Okay, next number, 510-227-7888. Please press star six if you would like to unmute. Next phone number, 517-489-9348. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, pressing star six. Okay, next phone number, 617-256-4067. Please press star six to unmute yourself if you would like to speak. Okay, next phone number, 626-283-9196. Please press star six if you would like to unmute yourself. Okay, next phone number, 707-239-0402. Please press star six if you would like to unmute yourself. Okay, next phone number, 661-342-5245. Next phone number, 760-451-4720. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, pressing star six. Next phone number, 760-535-2016. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, pressing star six. Next phone number, 858-753-3306. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, pressing star six. Now we have about four phone numbers to go and then we'll go back to the comment to see if anyone else has any other requests to speak. Next phone number, 949-525-2161. If you would like to speak, please press star six and unmute yourself. Okay, next phone number, 949-606-3643. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, pressing star six. Go ahead, I think you just unmuted yourself.
Hi, this is Chantel Schening, this time speaking as an individual and fertility patient and Californian resident. I really urge this program to be halted. I am one of the patients that will be traveling out of state for this care and feel that our state should do better to support reproductive rights and access for patients across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the next phone number, 949-614-3566. If you want to speak, please unmute yourself, pressing star six. Okay, last phone number, 951-791-1111. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, pressing star six. Okay, and I just want to, one more time, if anybody is on the phone and they would like to speak and I missed their number, I'll give you a chance to unmute yourself now. And if there's multiple people muting yourselves, we'll go one at a time. But let me just pause for now and press star six if you would like to speak.
Rebecca Freeman would like to speak. Go ahead, Rebecca, and unmute yourself.
All right. For the late addition, I was having some technical issues. My name is Rebecca Freeman. I'm a genetic counselor specializing in high-risk reproductive genomic medicine and fetal treatments and intervention at Children's Hospital Oakland. To echo others, based on incidence of sex chromosome differences alone, particularly Turner and Kleinfelter, we have the opportunity for early detection, for intervention, as well as affirmation of reproductive autonomy. I want to explicitly state as well that excluding sex chromosome aneuploidy in screening is not only illogical and inconsistent with the current standard of care, but it's contrary to the California State Screening Program's prior screening protocols. This complete screen, including trisomy 21, 18, 13, and sex chromosome aneuploidy, had previously been included in our prior version of the California prenatal screen, which obviously began with maternal serum screening. But if the patient screened positive, complete NIPT was an option offered and paid for through the state for patients. As others have stated, again, this is a step backwards in care, true for a variety of reasons, but is a step back compared to our previous workflows. Two months ago, for example, if a patient had their blood drawn for the state screening program and their fetus was found to have a cystic hygroma, they would be considered a screen positive and could elect NIPT. In this clinical setting, 45X, also known as Turner syndrome, is high on the differential. And for patients who are declining diagnostic testing, NIPT would be recommended. However, now, in California, it is no longer possible to obtain comprehensive screening without incurring costs. We have been repeatedly told by the state that insurance will cover sex chromosome aneuploidy screenings, but we are seeing now live in clinic that insurance is not being accepted or billed for these procedures. I urge the department to listen to the providers on this call. All of us who are unanimously calling for change. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
And if there's any other speakers on the phone, if you would like to speak, you can press star six to unmute yourself.
In the chat, it looks like people are very interested in hearing more from Dr. Platt. And he continued.
Thank you very much for allowing me to add a few comments. I think it's pretty clear, if you listened to the last hour presentation, it's 100% unanimous. This program has not met its standards. It's not met its obligations to our patient population, to the women of this country, the women of this state. It has hurt, as I think Dr. Hahn beautifully said, the difference between equality and equity and disparity is pretty clear. This program is inequitable. It shows disparity. It is not well thought of. You heard from the major professional societies who were not contacted prior to this legislation, and I'm not sure how this even got to be an emergency legislation. I would simply ask that the state listen to this, the CDPH listen to this, input from wide cross-section of the state, including patients, including providers, including laboratories, of the inequities that are shown in this program today. I would ask one further step, that the recording of this be sent to the governor of California and let him know what the people of California, his constituents, think of this program. The state, CDPH, should be embarrassed by having gone through this emergency legislation, as I said earlier, not had the professional context, a direct context with the societies that they've quoted. And you heard each of them today say that, from ACOG to CMA to SMFM, who took their time to be on this call today for us, for our patients, and for our physicians. I urge CDPH to take a step back and acknowledge the error in their processing, the error in this program, the error and the unfortunate harm it'll do to our patients. As I've got cut off, our patients have been very upset. Some have walked away. It is hurting our offices. Our staff is getting frustrated with the work that they have to do to make this happen. Okay, and these are people who've been with us for years and been loyal to this program. This is not doing justice to all the fine work that CDPH has done and could continue to do. This program is a mistake and it needs to be changed urgently and it needs to get back on track to really helping the pregnant population and their families. It's not just the women. It's not just the pregnant patients. It's physicians you're hurting, it's laboratories you're hurting, it's clinicians you're hurting, it's our staff you're hurting. And I think we need to make this immediately. And the time taken, you see the interest of the people of what have said. It's, I can't imagine another public hearing who's had 100% unanimous opinion of how poor this league was thought out. Thank you for your time listening.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the regulatory proposal heard today?
Just want to check one more time if there's any comments or people would like to speak. Please unmute yourself on the phone or enter into the chat, and we'll give that another minute or two. If there's no other commenters, we'll turn it back over to Sarah for the closing remarks.
Hi, good morning. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
May I speak?
My name is Paula. Yes.
I apologize, I'm a private physician and I'm on this call to listen to people that hopefully represent me and societies that hopefully represent us. But I just want to make a comment that has not been, or a point that has not been made. As private physicians, we are in a bind because we are aware that other physicians are at this time not using this program and do not intend to continue using this program beyond January. And so, standard of care at this time is very difficult for us to determine because if there are groups of physicians who are denying this request by the program that everyone has to send their labs to you and they are allowing patients to opt out in their own legal manner and taking that risk, then it becomes difficult for other physicians to understand what exactly is standard of care and where do my, where does my responsibility lie? My oath is to my patients and my oath is to do the best I can for my patient. This program is under standard of care and if other physicians in my community are not going to continue to participate in this program, then it becomes very difficult for private physicians to understand where we lie in our liabilities and what our responsibilities are. Because to me, it has always been simple and it's been to the patient, and now it's become very, very confusing. Obviously, all the other points that have been said are more important than this, but this is a point that I think has not been mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, can I speak?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Paula, I do work for a private physician as well. I've been working with him for 13 years and we've never had an issue like this before where it just kind of became complicated, not just for the office, but for our patients as well. The whole program was supposed to be beneficial for everyone, but it really isn't. As a private office and limited staff, the way that the orders are supposed to be submitted, the way the program just got, I'm sorry, I can't think of the word. When it first came out, it came out, it launched the day we had access to the program or to see how orders were going to work the day of. We didn't have access to it before. We don't have the correct printers to print our forms with. We're sending patients with requisition forms that we still need to print and send information with. Even though we have to write out everything already, we still have to submit demographics. It just has become more work than what it has already been. To me, it looks more like it's, we're not meeting patient care correctly. So I feel like if, and it's limiting other labs that we never had an issue with, like Unity, Natera, Quest, LabCorp, it's just been limited to what labs we can use now. So I think that this program is honestly kind of a mistake. Just from my point of view as a MA and I have to do the whole paperwork for the patients. A lot of patients are neglecting it just because they're not getting a whole complete panel like they used to. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Paula, can you please speak your full name and affiliation?
My name is Paula Serrano and I work for Dr. Maury Fio Levine. I'm an MA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Larry Plattigan.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please unmute yourself.
Yeah, Sarah, it's Larry Plattigan. I just would like the CDPH to tell us now what process will take place with this information that you received in this public hearing. Does the legislature get it? Does the governor get it? Does your branch get it? The hierarchy get it in the public health department? I think we all would like to know the next steps and what we can anticipate and when we will hear about it.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Carly Craig. I apologize for having technical difficulties. And I'm a representative for Billion to One. I can say that as soon as this program started, all of our offices had great confusion. There wasn't enough communication to these offices. Every day I'm going in and the Quest rep can't be reached because they don't have the right supplies or products. Offices don't know how to print labels. Natera reps are in there every day telling them it's illegal to use any other lab, basically using fear tactics to gain business. I have providers, I have MAs, I have RNs calling and texting me constantly, letting me know the confusion that they're having. Natera says one thing, Quest says something else. I have taken it upon myself to actually study the state program, trying to help my offices order Quest or Natera, even though I sell Unity, because these offices have not been communicated with properly. The number of patients they're seeing has gone down drastically. They're saying they literally don't have time to either get into the program, into the portal, because it doesn't work half the time. They can't get ahold of the reps to come in and actually give them a presentation or walk them through things and it's greatly affecting patient care. The fact that basically a monopoly is being created, not allowing other labs to participate that have been participating. These offices had a great program that worked perfectly for a long time and all of a sudden, everybody now doesn't know what they're doing. The confusion in these offices on the ground floor, I can tell you, is immense. It's created enormous stress for providers, MAs, nurses, front office staff. Less patients are being seen and they're not getting the standard of care that the rest of the country is getting. This program is awful and, yeah, that's my two cents.
I also would like to request that someone from the Department of Public Health respond to Dr. Platt's question.
This is Sarah Goleman. I will address that in my closing statements. But if there's anyone else, we have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Sarah. I'd like to just add a couple more comments. Again, this is Mara Hernandez, genetic counselor, as well as Californian. I would like to share for the record how concerned I am about the lack of stakeholder input that was solicited in designing this new program. I know it was many years in the making and there was, there were some meetings, sorry, where those invited to the meetings were able to present some concerns, but it feels like all of their concerns were dismissed. People were told, oh, that's not possible, that's not what we're going to do. As a member of the public, as well as a genetic counselor, I had no invitations to any of these meetings. I was not aware of when the meetings were happening. Genetic counselors in California are licensed through the Department of Public Health Genetic Disease Screening Program. My contact information is current with that branch. So I do believe genetic counselors are an important stakeholder. Genetic counseling, as you know, is required for any positive screening results and I did not receive any invitations to provide feedback other than the, this hearing today, as well as just days before the launch, soliciting volunteers to test the new portal, at which time meaningful changes were not possible for the rollout. And there has been so many places where clinician input would have been valuable in preventing some of the concerns that now we're speaking about. So I hope that more stakeholder input is invited and it's more accessible to providers, not just PDC directors, but any referring provider, any ordering provider, as well as genetic counselors in the state of California. I think it's difficult for a lot of the people who are involved in crafting this regulation to really understand how things work clinically on the ground. And our great state is very diverse. There are many different types of clinics where prenatal care is provided and it is extremely burdensome on many clinics to be able to conform with the current regulations, the online ordering portal, the fact that results come in the mail weeks after available. That is not consistent with standard of care overall for other lab work. There is no notification from the portal when a new result is available. So these are many things that I believe provider feedback would have addressed in the first place. So I just wanted to add that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see a request for Dr. Andy Hall to speak? Please unmute yourself. If not, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Oh, Dr. Hindi Stol. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I would like to speak to you coming from three perspectives and I'll be very brief. First, I just wanted to echo all that has been previously said by the wonderful speakers before me. First, I wanted to speak to you as a mother and a Californian who has used this service for this pregnancy for seven children. I was actually recently pregnant with a high-risk pregnancy just four months ago. And now were I to get pregnant again, I would have fewer opportunities to me than I just would have had a few months ago. Again, I echo the fact that the program today is now offering fewer opportunities for high-risk pregnancies and even low-risk pregnancies than it had before. I also speak to you as an MFM in a public hospital and I strongly echo the concerns about the equity that were previously mentioned. We have in our own clinic seen a tremendous decrease in the uptake to the program due to the equity issues that have been previously articulated. We also have found that our hands are directly tied to be able to get patients the studies that they need because of the limitations in the labs offered and the monopolies that have been created. Finally, I speak to you as an attorney who's in charge of our hospital medical legal committee and I'm extremely concerned about the liability that is being forced upon both private practitioners, public practitioners, MFMs, obstetrics gynecologists, sonographers, genetic counselors, and all their healthcare providers anywhere in between related to a number of these regulations. Thank you.
We have five minutes. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we close this hearing? If so, please unmute yourself and state your name and affiliation. So, my closing remarks, the California Department of Public Health Office of Regulations will continue to receive written comments until 5:00 PM through today, October 26th, 2022, at 1415 L Street, Suite 500, Sacramento, California. 958-14 or by fax to 916-636-6220. Or you may email your comments to regulations@cdph.ca.gov. Hearing no additional requests to speak, I hereby close the hearing. Thank you very much.